Buenas noches, bienvenidos a nuestra reunión de la ciudadanía en la escuela de Kennedy. Gracias por estar con nosotros esta noche. Vamos a empezar la reunión. Señor Wanda Lynn, por favor, llame a la cámara.
Señor G. Mayor, el miembro del consejo, Aguirre.
Aquí.
Miembro del consejo, Bane.
Aquí.
Miembro del consejo, Howard.
Aquí.
Miembro del consejo, Pierce, ausente. Miembro del consejo, Seabird.
Aquí.
Vicepresidente Mayor Faust.
Aquí.
Señor G.
Aquí.
Gracias.
Queremos que se levanten y se unan al miembro del consejo Aguirre, agradeciendo la bandera de nuestro país.
Agradecimiento a la bandera de los Estados Unidos de América y a la república en la que se encuentra, una nación, bajo Dios, inimitable con la libertad y justicia para todos.
Gracias, miembro del consejo Aguirre, y gracias a todos de nuevo por estar con nosotros. Esta es la primera de nuestras reuniones de la ciudadanía en las comunidades este año, y el concepto detrás de esto es hacerlo un poco más fácil para nuestros residentes, nuestros miembros de la comunidad, para hablar con el consejo. Antes de empezar, hay un número de personal aquí hoy para escuchar y responder si hay preguntas. Tenemos a Ramona, nuestro nuevo director de obras públicas, jefe Gamés, directora de jefe, Malpin, jefe Skinner, nuestro nuevo... ¿Puedo decirlo de nuevo, Derek? Nuestro nuevo director de biblioteca, Derek Wolf Graham, TK, nuestro directo de jefe de obras públicas, Capitán Spicer. ¿Alguien me está perdiendo ahí atrás? Oh, Steve Turner, este es Steve Turner, nuestro gerente de planificación, y un número de diferentes personas aquí para responder cualquier pregunta que puedan tener o tomar su nombre y seguirle. Porque esta no es una reunión agendizada, el consejo realmente no puede hacer mucho más que escuchar, porque no hay ningún tema específico de agenda. Pero queremos hacer que sea más fácil para ustedes venir y compartir sus pensamientos, preocupaciones, ideas con el consejo, porque a veces es difícil ir a la ciudadanía a la calle. A veces es difícil estar en el podium. Así que queríamos tratar de hacerlo un poco más fácil. El año pasado estuvimos en Redwood Shores, en el centro de Ferrocks. Tenemos muchos diferentes barrios en la ciudad de Redwood con muchos necesidades diferentes. No somos una comunidad homogénea. Hay diferentes lugares con diferentes problemas y necesidades. Solo queríamos salir y hacer que sea más fácil para todos decir hola y compartir sus pensamientos y preocupaciones. Antes de abrir la puerta a la publica, un par de cosas. Uno, si quieren hablar, por favor escriban una tarjeta de orador. Le transmire a Sylvia, y ella me la dará. Tendrán tres minutos. Ella tiene este pequeño triángulo colorido. Comenzará con verde para comenzar. Cuando lleguen al azul, tienen aproximadamente 30 segundos. Y cuando lleguen al rojo, por favor, detenganse y déjenles a otra persona un turno. Así que ese es el programa de esta noche. Pasaremos hasta que todos los tarjetas de orador estén listos, luego nos adherniremos, y estoy seguro de que los miembros del consejo se quedarán por un tiempo para tener cualquier conversación personal que puedan tener, o puedan hablar con el personal sobre cualquier problema específico. Así que antes de empezar, me gustaría preguntarle al asistente de gestión de la ciudad, Audrey Ramberg, para dar un resumen de lo que está pasando en la ciudad de Redwood. Un par de cosas. Hay tal vez una o dos cosas pasando en la ciudad de Redwood, así que, señora Ramberg.
Gracias, señor Mayor. En realidad hay una o dos cosas pasando en la ciudad de Redwood. Y me gustaría tomar la oportunidad de esta reunión de la ciudad para proporcionar un breve update, y poner eso en el contexto de las iniciativas estratégicas de la ciudad. Como muchos saben, el consejo ha adoptado un plan estratégico y recientemente ha dirigido que se revise para que las declaraciones de meta sean más actuales y significativas, y que también hubiera una inclusión de medidas de resultado para que podamos seguir el progreso. El plan tiene seis iniciativas estratégicas, y incluyen construcción de la comunidad, seguridad pública, operaciones gubernamentales, comunidad para todos los años, transporte y infraestructura, y... hay uno que estoy olvidando.
Transporte.
Transporte, gracias. Y tengo buena noticia para compartir. Hay mucho trabajo bueno en todas estas áreas, pero en particular voy a centrarme esta noche en comunidad para todos los años y transporte. Primero, en febrero, el personal presentó al consejo como parte de su revisión midaño. Algunas ideas de cosas que queríamos traer adelante en el presupuesto de 2015-2016 que aumentará las servicios para la comunidad. Y estas están en un número de áreas. Primero, vamos a traer la creación de un día de maestros con un shuttle y programas de ciudadanía para traer a los senadores a nuestra ciudad de la ciudad, para que puedan disfrutar de los muchos beneficios de lo que está pasando allí. Vamos a traer una expansión de horas de biblioteca, tanto en la sede de Sheberg como en la biblioteca de Ferrocks. Y vamos a mejorar el programa de programación en nuestro edificio de actividades de la comunidad. Finalmente, vamos a incrementar o proponer el aumento de la servicio de aparcamiento calle, que ofrecemos, duplicándolo a dos veces por mes. Dado el gran interés en el programa de shuttle de día de maestros, hemos estado investigando si podríamos en realidad comenzar a implementarlo en este año fiscal actual. Segundo, quería compartir algunas buenas noticias sobre las cosas que están sucediendo para mejorar la facilidad y disponibilidad de la pista en nuestra ciudad de la ciudad. Hay... Primero, el estacionamiento de la calle Winslow fue recientemente reabierto, devolviendo esos espacios a uso público. Y habrá más de 2.300 espacios de pista nuevos entrando a la ciudad de la ciudad como parte de los proyectos que están en la red de completación. Esto incluye 900 espacios en nuestro desarrollo de la calle 900, 290 de los cuales estarán abiertos al público en las noches y los fines de semana. Finalmente, en la pista, estamos mirando la posibilidad de crear una nueva estructura de pista en la ciudad de la ciudad para que haya más espacios, y también para reemplazar los meters de pista con tecnología nueva que haga que sea más conveniente para nuestros residentes y otros que visitan la ciudad de la ciudad. Y luego, otra área de iniciativa que solo quería tocar, primero, es decir feliz día de la tierra a todos. Este viernes siguiente, el día de mañana, es día de la tierra, y tenemos un número de iniciativas que la ciudad está proporcionando y que te dan la oportunidad de estar involucrado, ya sea conservando agua, o realizando gastos de energía en tu casa, o involucrando en limpiar el medio ambiente. Hay un número de cosas que tal vez hayan visto en la mesa cuando entraron. Si no, por favor, vayan por allí cuando salgan. Hay personal allí para proporcionar información a usted. Y como mencionó el señor Mayor, tenemos a un número de personas de nuestro personal senior aquí, feliz de responder preguntas después de la reunión. Y con eso, las únicas otras cosas que quería compartir, señor Mayor, son algunos de los horarios importantes a venir. Mencioné que tuvimos una revisión midaño en preparación para el proceso presupuestario de 2015-2016. La primera parte de eso será este lunes, el 27. El consejo municipal escuchará una sesión de estudio sobre nuestro proyecto de mejora de capital. Esos son nuestros mejoravimientos de infraestructura. Y luego, el 8 de junio, será la sesión de estudio para el presupuesto operativo, seguido de una audiencia pública para la adopción del presupuesto en el 22 de junio. Así que, a menos que haya preguntas del consejo, te devolveré la palabra, señor Mayor.
Gracias, señora Ramberg. También me gustaría decir algunos agradecimientos adicionales. Quiero agradecer al principal David Peluiugi, que está bastante lejos ahora, y su equipo, incluyendo a Keith Kaderer y Van, por abrir su gimnasio y la escuela de Kennedy para hospitarnos esta noche. Quiero reconocer a Penn TV y su equipo que están aquí esta noche. Están grabando la reunión, y se publicará en nuestra página web en unos 48 horas, o menos de 48 horas, para que puedan ver lo que pasó esta noche. Así que quiero darles los kudos. También tenemos traducción española disponible para aquellos que pueden necesitar traducción disponible. Así que con eso creo que podemos empezar. De nuevo, si quieren hablar, por favor, escriban una tarjeta de orador. Con eso, me gustaría llamar a nuestro primer orador, Yolanda de la Rosa, seguido de Aleida Donaire.
Necesito ayuda.
Buenas tardes, consiglos de la ciudad de Redwood. Mi nombre es Yolanda de la Rosa.
Buenas tardes, miembros del consejo. Mi nombre es Yolanda de la Rosa.
Soy residente de la ciudad de Redwood por más de 18 años.
He sido residente en la ciudad de Redwood durante más de 18 años.
Y tengo... soy madre de un adolescente de 14 años.
Tengo un adolescente de 14 años.
Estudiante de Roosevelt.
Él estudia... él o ella estudia en Roosevelt.
Y pertenezco a la clase trabajadora.
Y soy una madre trabajadora.
En mi situación como madre soltera en estos momentos, mi preocupación y mi frustración...
Mi situación como madre sola, mi preocupación y mi miedo es...
El alto incremento que se vive, el alto incremento de rentas que se vive en esta ciudad.
El alto incremento de rentas que estamos pasando en la ciudad.
Tal vez pueda sonar muy dramático para ustedes.
Puede sonar muy dramático para ustedes.
Pero uno de mis temores es tener que moverme de ciudad, o incluso de estado.
Pero uno de mis mayores miedos sería tener que moverme de ciudad, o incluso de estado. Por el ya no poder seguir pagando el alto incremento de rentas. Por el hecho de que no podré seguir pagando y permitiendo los incrementos de rentas que están sucediendo.
Y que en determinado momento...
Así que en cualquier momento...
Sea yo quien le tenga que pedir a mi hijo que abandone sus estudios.
Sería mi... Sería para mí pedirle a mi hijo que deje de estudiar.
Porque no puedo seguirlo soportando y ayudando con sus estudios.
Porque no puedo más soportarlo y ayudarlo con sus estudios.
Y educación es hasta solo tener para medio comer y no alimentarse como debe de ser.
No tenemos suficiente dinero para alimentarnos, no alimentarnos correctamente, sino solo para sobrevivir.
Estoy segura que si mi hijo no dependiera de mí...
Estoy segura de que si mi hijo no dependiera de mí...
Yo me buscaría otro trabajo aparte del que tengo.
Probablemente tendría que encontrar otro trabajo, otro trabajo aparte del que tengo ya.
Pero yo soy la única persona responsable.
Pero soy la única persona responsable de él.
De brindar a mi hijo los cuidados necesarios.
Para brindarle el cuidado que necesita.
Y que si me buscaría otro trabajo...
Y sí, me gustaría tener otro trabajo.
La comunicación en temas de hijo...
Si lo hiciese, la comunicación entre padre y hijo...
Estaría siendo afectada.
Sería afectado por esto.
Y que al mismo tiempo estaría arriesgando...
Al mismo tiempo estaría arriesgando...
Una buena educación para él.
Una buena educación para él.
Eso es todo por el momento.
Esto es todo lo que tengo que decir por ahora.
Mi historia o lo que estoy diciendo no solo habla de mí, creo que habla por muchos de mis compañeros, familiares, y más ciudadanos que están viviendo lo mismo.
Esta historia que te traigo no se aplica solo a mí, sino a amigos y familiares que todos están pasando lo mismo.
Y que al mismo tiempo afecta la estabilidad económica, física, social y moral.
Esto, en cambio, afecta la situación económica y social de la ciudad.
Gracias, miembros del consilio, por haberme escuchado.
Gracias, miembros del consejo, por escucharme.
Gracias, señora de la rosa. Aleida Donaire, seguido de Nada Balator.
Buenas tardes a todos. Mi nombre es Aleida Donaire. Tengo alrededor de casi 20 años de ser residente de la ciudad de Redwood.
Buenas tardes. Mi nombre es Aleida Delaire, y he sido residente en la ciudad de Redwood durante más de 20 años.
Y formo parte del 47% de los residentes de esta área que rentamos.
Y soy parte del 47% de los residentes de la ciudad que renta.
Mi pregunta concreta es hacia los miembros del consilio, qué es la acción concreta que tienen planeado.
El propósito de mi estar aquí es preguntar concretamente a los miembros del consejo, cuál es su plan de acción concreto o respuestas que tendrían.
Para resolver esta crisis de vivienda que estamos enfrentando muchos.
Para resolver esta crisis de vivienda que muchos de nosotros estamos viviendo ahora.
Puesto que, en el caso particular mío, en el lapso de año y unos meses, he tenido un aumento de 350 dólares en la renta.
En mi caso, he aumentado la renta de 350 dólares en un año y en unos meses.
Y ya estamos esperando otro aumento a mediados de este año.
Y estamos anticipando otro aumento en el medio de este año.
Entonces, como residente de esta área, yo igual que muchos esperamos ser escuchados.
Así que como residente de esta área, yo, como muchos otros, esperaría ser oído.
Puesto que también formamos parte de esta comunidad, dándoles servicios a muchos de ustedes, quizás cuidándoles sus niños, limpiándoles sus casas, limpiándoles sus jardines, sirviéndoles en los restaurantes y también en los hoteles.
Nos ocupamos de vuestra comunidad. Trabajamos para muchos de ustedes. Quizás cuidamos de sus hijos, quizás limpiamos sus jardines, quizás servimos en un restaurante.
Desde mi punto de vista, se me hace ya ilógico y racional que haya un salario mínimo de 10 dólares la hora.
Parece irracional o ilógico para mí que hubiera un salario mínimo de 10 dólares por hora.
Lo que significa que un trabajador que está a tiempo completo va a devengar alrededor de 1.600 dólares al mes.
Esto significa que un trabajador en tiempo completo obtendría alrededor de 1.600 dólares.
Con ese salario realmente no está capacitado ni para pagar un apartamento insignificante de un cuarto.
Este valor no es suficiente para cubrir incluso un apartamento simple o pequeño de una habitación.
Entonces, esa es la gran preocupación que tenemos, y realmente lo estamos haciendo también, como dijo la otra compañera, por nuestros hijos. Yo tengo un hijo ya egresando de la escuela secundaria.
Esta es nuestra gran preocupación, y estamos haciendo esto, como dijo mi amigo antes, estamos haciendo esto para nuestros hijos. Tengo un estudiante de la escuela secundaria.
Con grandes aspiraciones a llegar a ser un ingeniero en este país.
Con muchas aspiraciones para ser un ingeniero en este país.
Pero él ve también la gran preocupación que tenemos de que no contamos ya ni siquiera para poderle dar de comer.
Pueden ver nuestra gran preocupación y preocupación porque no podemos proporcionar ni siquiera la comida.
Es todo, es todo lo que quiero decirle y que hablo en nombre de ese 47% que estamos ahorita demandando que seamos escuchados y que nos den respuesta positiva y pronta.
Esto es todo lo que digo, y traigo la voz del 47% que exige una respuesta a nuestras preocupaciones.
Gracias, señora Donaire. Nada Balator, seguido de Karen Kiefer.
Gracias, señor Mayor y consejo, por darnos esta oportunidad, esta reunión de la ciudad. Tengo tres cosas, al menos tres cosas, para agradecer a la ciudad de Redwood, y también tengo una solicitud. Lo primero que realmente aprecio y espero que otros hagan es que nos pusieron en marcha una lista de e-mail de vecinos cercanos, lo que hace que sea muy fácil encontrar qué está pasando y hace una especie de sensación de comunidad, creo. Luego, hay la aplicación que pusiste en marcha relativamente... Bueno, no sé cuánto hace. Empecé a usarla relativamente recientemente, la aplicación de My Redwood City. Y si la gente no está usando para hacer preguntas de la ciudad, o para reportar diversos problemas y demás, estás en una verdadera regocijo cuando lo haces, porque lo he usado tal vez cinco veces, y obtengo respuestas muy rápidas, y siempre todo se resuelve. Creo que es simplemente maravilloso. La otra cosa, la tercera cosa por la que muchas gracias, es el uso de la agua. El pequeño correo que nos sale cada vez que pasa por un par de semanas, creo que es. El departamento de agua. Si tienes un meter smart para tu agua, puedes inscribirte en esto, y te muestra un gráfico de lo que se proyectará para usar basado en el número de personas en tu casa, la tamaño de tu jardín, y varios otros parámetros. Y lo que amo es que realmente me ayuda a mantener bajo mi uso de agua y a ver si hay un picante. Sabes, si hay un picante, podría haber un desagüe en algún lugar. Realmente me ayuda a conservar agua. Así que si alguien no tiene ya eso, que es capaz de obtenerlo, por favor, inscríbete en esto. Es muy importante en este momento. He hablado con algunas personas en nuevos desarrollos que lo tienen, pero no han sido informados por el desarrollador que lo tienen. Así que desearía que pudieramos promocionarlo un poco. Y la última cosa es sobre nuestro edificio de la ciudad. Estaba sentada en Middlefield en uno de los cafés de piso de lado el otro día con mis nietos y mi hermana, y me di cuenta de que estaba mirando hacia Middlefield, o hacia Middlefield, supongo que es, a este enorme cruz de 900. Y me hizo sentir, sin puna, encerrada. Creo que usted está un poco decepcionado con el diseño. Recibí eso de algunos reportes de noticias, y ciertamente sentí, oh, han arruinado la vista, realmente. Así que espero... Sé que están interesados en revisar el plan de la ciudad, el plan preciso. Por favor, consideren un moratorium sobre el edificio para que podamos ver dónde estamos antes de entrar en eso. Muchas gracias.
Gracias, señora Balator. Sabes, aprecio su apoyo por sus comentarios, pero tal vez no todos tienen la misma opinión. Es un poco difícil a veces, a menos que estén acostumbrados a hablar públicamente. Así que démosle una oportunidad a todos, porque me gusta escuchar a todos, y no quiero que ellos se den miedo de ir al micrófono. Así que aprecio su apoyo por sus comentarios, pero con suerte podemos ser apreciados por todos sus comentarios y dejar que el consejo escuche a todos. Así que Karen. Karen Kiefer, seguido de Chris Johnson.
Gracias. Soy Karen Kiefer, de Valoda Road, aquí en la ciudad de Redwood. Y quiero agradecer al consejo y al personal de la ciudad por el plan preciso, el desarrollo, la red de la ciudad, las cosas buenas que están haciendo para hacer que nuestra ciudad sea maravillosa. Y también quiero agradecerles por dejar de los asociados de DMB, por poner 30, 20, cuál era, 12.000 hogares en el pozo sal. Espero que se mantenga, que no los dejesen construir allí. Es muy inseguro. Tenemos que necesitar viviendas affordables en la ciudad de Redwood. Affordable no es la mitad de lo que el ingreso mediano produce. Es mucho menos que eso, y tenemos que necesitar vivienda. Pero para ir junto con toda la vivienda que está construyendo, también necesitamos agua. Y no sé por qué seguimos construyendo cuando no hemos hecho nada para traer más agua. Así que cuando hablé con el señor G. antes de la reunión, varias personas en el Chronicle de San Francisco recomendaron una red, no la red Keystone, sino una red real para traer nuestro precioso recurso de agua desde Washington o Oregon, donde tienen mucho más de lo que necesitan en los tiempos de inundación. Trabajé en FEMA en asistencia a desastres para mi carrera, y hay mucho inundación en los Estados Unidos. Lo peor de demasiada lluvia es no llover. Y aquí también también necesitamos misioneras de nieve. Así que tienen eso en Canadá, y podríamos traerlo a lo largo de la frontera entre el interestado 5 y aquí, y a California norte. Creo que Los Ángeles obtienen su agua del Río Colorado, sobre el otro lado de las Sierra. Pero necesitamos hacerlo ahora. La desalineación cuesta mucho dinero. La red de agua... Take las personas que quieran trabajar todos esos trabajos que están prometiendo para la red de agua, la red Keystone, ponlos aquí y hazlos hacer una red real de agua. Necesitamos ella. Lo necesitarán para el desarrollo más profundo. Y también agradecemos a los residentes de la ciudad de Redwood por que no se nos va a reducir, excepto por el 8%. ¡Yay! Hicimos un gran trabajo, y espero que lo sigamos. Muchas gracias por todo lo que están haciendo, y sigue haciendo el trabajo bueno.
Gracias, señora Kiefer. Chris Johnson, seguido de Jimmy Hedges.
Gracias, señor G. Mayor y miembros del consejo, por su servicio a nuestra ciudad y por hospitar esta evento de la ciudad. Mi nombre es Chris Johnson, y he vivido en el vecindario de Mount Carmel durante 12 años. Me gustaría tomar esta oportunidad de estar públicamente, y para recordar que creo que el consejo necesita tomar acción inmediata y no esperar más allá de ajustar y bajar las tallas de edificio en nuestro plan de la ciudad. Me preocupa la tamaño y altura de muchos de los nuevos proyectos de construcción, ya sea en la red o cerca de completación, y su escala a nuestros edificios más atractivos y arquitectónicamente atractivos que los rodean. Como residentes, queremos invitar puentes, puentes de piso, cafés de aire. No queremos subidas de oficina que ocultan nuestros lugares de reunión y crean un efecto de ventriloja fría. Edificios de este tipo no dan la impresión de que los desarrolladores eran respetuosos con la visión de nuestra ciudad, la calidad de vida de los residentes y la rica historia de nuestra ciudad. En su lugar, parecen que el diseño fue impulsado por una cosa y una cosa solo: el beneficio. Como residentes, queremos edificios que se vean bien desde una distancia y cerca. No somos fácilmente engañados. Los residentes de la ciudad de Redwood tienen buen gusto, y sabemos la diferencia entre fachadas baratas, pisos de alta altura y otros elementos exteriores, y aquellos que son más desafiados, diseñados cuidadosamente, y mantienen un alto estándar estético. Urgamos al consejo y al comisión de planificación no comprometerse con tales estándares. Simplemente no es respetuoso de nuestra ciudad, de sus ciudadanos y de nuestra integridad histórica. Entendemos que el razonamiento original era agrupar edificios de alta densidad en el centro de nuestra ciudad de la ciudad, cerca de nuestro centro de transición. Pero, ¿por qué somos la única ciudad con máximas de altura de edificio más alta en toda la península fuera de San José y San Francisco? Primero, con el sur de San Francisco, segundo, con máximas de altura de edificio que solo llegan a 85 pies. Nuestras llegan hasta 136 pies. ¿Por qué es eso? ¿Por qué el consejo ha designado a la ciudad de Redwood como el hijo de la posteridad para los edificios de mayor densidad en la península? Los residentes como yo no quieren lidiar con todos los problemas de tráfico, agua, seguridad y infraestructura que acompañan centros urbanos de alta densidad. Y tampoco ningún grupo de residentes a lo largo de la península quiere estos problemas tampoco. También he mirado las documentaciones históricas desde 2007 y 2010 y no puedo encontrar ningún residente en registro de apoyo de edificios de 12 pisos. Por el contrario, parece que los edificios tan altos siempre han sido controversios. Así que me pregunto, ¿por qué todos ustedes votaron unanimamente en apoyo a ellos? Como saben, hay una página de Facebook llamada "Residentes de la ciudad de Redwood, ¿qué?" Y cada vez que se discute el tema de las tallas de edificio, nunca hay una sola persona que dice "Edificios de 12 pisos son una gran idea". Por favor, escuchen lo que los residentes quieren y actúen ahora. Hagamos algo justo con los inversores especulativos, propietarios y desarrolladores, y déjenlos saber que los residentes no quieren edificios tan altos en la ciudad. Te pido que dirijas al personal de la ciudad a presentar una propuesta para modificar el plan de la ciudad de la ciudad y bajar las tallas de edificio ahora. No en seis meses, o el próximo año, o cuando se realice el plan de la ciudad de la ciudad 2. Hagamos una conversación real y pública en el nivel del consejo sobre este importante y impresionante tema. Muchas gracias por tu tiempo y consideración.
Gracias, señor Johnson. Jimmy Hedges, seguido de Laura Marquez.
Buenas noches, consejo civil. Lo que me gustaría abordar es la seguridad de la agua. Sé que tenemos todo el agua reciclada, y suena bien cuando dices, "Tomar un paquete de cinco litros, ir a los jardines corporativos y llevarlo a casa y usarlo en tu árbol" o algo así. Creo que la ciudad debería considerar usar algunos de sus camiones de tanque para traer la agua a la gente, especialmente para los árboles. En algún lugar en la lectura de la ciudad hay una cosa llamada "Nuestros árboles". Sería bueno si la ciudad pudiera usar ese agua reciclada para agua nuestros árboles. Y el otro aspecto es el edificio. Cualquier sistema de agua caliente debería tener calentadores en la esquina, no enterrados en algún lugar afuera del edificio, para que obtenga agua instantánea, y no esté corriendo agua por dos o tres minutos, desperdiciando para llegar a tu agua caliente. Y eso es todo de lo que hablaremos esta noche. El siguiente, tendremos otras cosas.
Gracias, señor Hedges. Laura Marquez, seguido de Guadalupe Ortiz.
Muy buenas noches. Mi nombre es Laura Marquez. El por qué estoy aquí es para decirles y preguntarles qué es lo que van a hacer respecto al control de rentas.
Estoy aquí para hablarles del control de rentas en la ciudad.
Hemos escuchado que hay muchos edificios que están construyendo bastantes edificios, pero quisiera preguntarles también si saben cuál es el costo tan elevado que están pidiendo por estos apartamentos.
Así que entendemos que hay muchos edificios que se están haciendo, pero nos gustaría preguntarles si están conscientes del precio que se está pidiendo para algunos de estos residentes.
Con todo respeto, mi pregunta es, ¿qué harían ustedes?
So we understand that there's many buildings coming up, but we would like to ask you if you're aware of the price that's being asked for this, some of these residences.
Con todo respeto, mi pregunta es, ¿qué harían ustedes para pagar un apartamento, supongamos, de dos recámaras, 2,500 dólares, con un sueldo que es el básico, el que está aquí, 8,850? ¿Quieren ustedes para pagar esa renta? ¿Cómo le harían ustedes? Pónganse, perdón, pónganse en nuestros zapatos para que vean lo difícil que es para nosotros, el alto costo, y si pueden hacer algo por nosotros, ¿qué podemos hacer la comunidad para resolver este problema?
My question is, what would you do if you were faced with a rent of $2,500 and you were earning the 8 or 8.50 an hour that we get here? I respectfully ask that you put yourselves in our shoes and tell us what would you do to help us in this situation? What would you be willing to do if you were faced with that?
Pues eso es todo por mí. Pues muchas gracias, y espero tomen en cuenta nuestro problema, que es grande, no solo para mí sino para toda mi comunidad, la comunidad trabajadora.
That is it, that's all I have to say, and I hope that you consider what I have to say for me and for the rest of the working people of Redwood City.
Thank you, Ms. Marquez. Guadalupe Ortiz. I do not have any other speaker cards after Ms. Ortiz, so if you'd like to speak, please let our city clerk know.
Muy buenas noches a todos. Mi nombre es Guadalupe Ortiz, y también vengo por parte del concilio de, que estamos creando para...
¿Cuál concilio?
Del control de rentas. Queremos crear algo para el control de rentas.
Okay, so my name is Guadalupe Ortiz, and I'm here representing the council, and I ask what council? And they're talking about a concilio, a group to...
Perdón, comité.
...take care of rent control. Some sort of newly formed group.
Sí, ya puedo. Este, yo vengo a hablarles de la manera en que a mi familia le está afectando esto. Mi esposo tiene 15 años trabajando en un deli. Él está ganando ahorita 15 dólares la hora.
So I come to you to tell you how this affects my family specifically. My husband works for a deli, and right now he earns 15 dollars per hour.
Él ya tiene más de un año pidiéndole a su patrón que le aumente dos dólares, porque a nosotros en un año nos han aumentado dos veces la renta.
So we've been asking for his boss to increase his salary, given that we've been, that our rent has been raised two times.
Lamentablemente pues no le han hecho caso. Le dice que van a hablar con el dueño, el dueño sigue creciendo su compañía, ¿verdad? Pero a mi esposo no le han aumentado.
So unfortunately, our calls have not been heard. His salary has not been increased.
Y yo constantemente estoy lidiando con estirar el dinero para tratar de que me alcance, pero yo he hablado con la dueña, pero la dueña yo veo que se deja mucho influenciar por la persona que está manejando ahora el building, que es un real stay, y él le dice, "tu propiedad ahora vale lo mismo que está valiendo otra." Él le pone un ejemplo, ¿verdad?, de los nuevos que están. Entonces dice, "tú estás perdiendo mucho dinero," y ellos empiezan a subirnos, a subirnos la renta para desesperarnos y desalojarnos, para ellos agarrar a nuevos rentarios.
So basically, there's somebody managing the building who is taking in the new people with a very high rent, and the ones that are in there or have been there are keep being asked and pushed and pushed until they give up and move, is what she thinks this person wants to accomplish.
La pregunta que tengo es, ¿nos están tomando en cuenta o somos nada más como gente desechable?
So the question I have for you is, are we being counted or are we disposable?
Sí, porque la manera que estamos viviendo y estamos siendo tratados, estamos viendo que no les importamos.
The way we live, the way we're treated, we feel like we don't count.
Ahorita estamos pensando hasta movernos más lejos, pero el trabajo está aquí, y nos queremos mover al Valle Central, pero allá no hay trabajo. Sí, la renta es más barata, pero no hay trabajo. Entonces mi esposo va a tener que estar viajando diariamente de una hora y media para llegar a donde va a ser nuestro nuevo hogar, y quizás dos o tres horas por el tráfico para venir a trabajar.
Our option right now is to move to the Central Valley where there's no jobs, so my husband is right now contemplating driving three hours to come to his work and to place us in a house or apartment situation that will be more affordable for us.
Yo quisiera si por favor, o sea, tomaran conciencia y miraran pues las condiciones que estos apartamentos están. Nosotros no tenemos ni aire acondicionado. Ahorita que viene el calor, mi apartamento es un horno en tiempo de verano, y en el frío es un congelador, porque la instalación tampoco es buena.
I would like for the city to take into account the state in which these apartments are. We have the summer coming up, and it's an oven in the summer, and it's a freezer in the winter.
Entonces ese es el, por el motivo que hoy vengo a pedir si por favor alguien nos pudiera ayudar. No soy la única con ese problema. Diariamente oigo en la escuela de mi niña el mismo comentario, padres pidiendo prestado para poder pagar su renta, o quejándose que no tienen para comprar la comida, porque tienen que dar todo el dinero para la renta.
Yeah. So daily in my child's school, I encounter parents who are asking others to borrow money to come up with a rent, to complete their rent money, or borrow money to buy food.
Eso es todo, y solo hablo en nombre de todas las personas que están siendo afectadas al igual que yo. Gracias.
Again, that's it. I'm here to tell you what other people like me are going through. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ortiz. That's the end of my speaker cards. Would anyone else like to make a comment or speak to council? Would any council member like to make a comment this evening as we wrap up? We will be around, staff will be around. For example, Mr. Hedges, I would encourage you to speak with Ramona, our Director of Public Works. There are a number of initiatives to bring recycled water in tanker trucks onto this side of the 101. There was a presentation at council meeting, I think it was the last one, about some of those initiatives. So take advantage, talk to our staff. Our library directors here can talk to you about increasing library hours, things that are going on in Redwood City, street sweeping twice a month, things like that. Councilmember Bing.
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to respond to a few things I heard tonight. Can everybody hear me in the back? I know the acoustics in here are not very good tonight, but first of all, on the issue of rents, I'm painfully aware of how quickly the rents have increased in this city, and I appreciate you coming tonight to express your opinions on that. I want you to know that I do value you. I think we all value having you here in this community, and that a community is made up of people of all income levels. It's very important that we keep people of all income levels in this city, keeping our city safe, keeping our city clean, working in all sorts of jobs where we need people. So we've got to figure out a solution to this problem. I don't personally believe that rent control is the solution. Rent control has caused some problems in other communities where it's been implemented. I do, however, believe there are incentives that we can create to get landlords to keep rents low, and I'm sure one of my colleagues or the mayor can elaborate on some of the things that we're talking about. I also believe that we need a regional increase in the minimum wage. San Jose just went to 15 dollars an hour. I think we should do the same thing, but I don't think we should do it just as Redwood City, I think we should do it throughout the Bay Area. And hopefully, a combination of those things will help achieve the effect of stabilizing rents and keeping more jobs here at all income levels. The topic of a moratorium on buildings was raised, as was a few other relation, issues related to buildings downtown. One thing that stood out to me as I was hearing these comments was that we used to have, the Assistant City Manager read our strategic initiatives, and I'm glad she did that because I was going to put those out there as well. We used to have a guiding, an overarching guiding principle, and one of those principles was aesthetics. I actually think it's time that we put that back on there. It used to be on there because there were a lot of parts of Redwood City that were very rundown, there was a lot of trash, there were four-foot-high weeds on Woodside Road, and we had a council member and former mayor, Ira Ruskin, who really pushed aesthetics when he was on the council. I'd like to see us put that back on the table. I am disappointed with some of the buildings that have been built downtown. And I'd like to clarify, just from my own perspective, why I voted for the precise plan, which I expected to play out over 10, 15 years, and what's happened is it's played out a lot more quickly than we expected, at least than I expected, and I'm just going to speak for myself. I do think it's time that we revisit that plan, including building heights, including water issues. Now, all of the buildings downtown, the new constructions are dual-plumbed, which means that they have pipes that will carry recycled water in addition to potable water. However, I think an optimistic assessment would be that we're about five years out from that. So that means that they are using portable water. It's great that there are a lot of new parking spaces being created, but, you know, those parking spaces will largely be used by the new employees who are going to be coming into the downtown. It's great that 50% of the new box employees will be taking the train, but another 50% won't be taking the train, and we have to think about the impact that's going to have on traffic and parking. So while it's tempting to paint an optimistic picture of everything that's happened downtown, it's not all good news for the residents who want to enjoy their downtown. So I appreciate all of you coming to express your opinions about that, and I think that's all I'll say for now. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Bing. Others? Vice Mayor Faust.
I want to thank all of you for coming this evening. There's quite a number of people in the audience who did not put in a speaker card, so I hope that you will take the time after the meeting to come up, to talk to us, to introduce yourselves. Sometimes coming up to a podium is not the most comfortable position, but we will be here. That's why Mayor Gee and my council colleagues, that's why we wanted to have town hall meetings out in the neighborhood. So with you here, it'd be nice to have the opportunity to talk to you, so I really encourage, if you have the time, to come up and talk to us. I'd also like, and I was looking at the various speaker cards as the mayor was going through them, with some of the folks that have talked about the significant rent increases and the wages, if you could make sure that there is contact information on your speaker cards. There are a number of resources through our Fair Oaks Community Center, through our Park and Rec Department, through the different service and nonprofit organizations that the city works with, that there is rental assistance, there's food assistance, there's different things that we as a council would want to help people with, but we need contact information. So if you could make sure that that's there, the follow-up can be done through the various resources. I'd also like, at some point, to have some information brought back to the council, because there were, water was one of the issues that was talked about, the use of water and some of the new developments, and so if we can get kind of data, and I think probably Ramona, you can help with that, we've talked about it at Utilities, in terms of what developments use water, how much is used and different things, so we have a better understanding of it. Also, I think we need some clarification on the parking spaces that are going to come online downtown for public, as well as the private uses for some of the new employers that are coming in, because with each of the new employers, there's something called a transportation demand management plan, and employers have to have that in place, and they're called mitigated impacts to a community. So the Sanford Project, for example, is something that, and the Friendly Acres neighborhood is very much aware of this, with X number of cars coming in and out, what's being done to make sure that those cars don't go through the neighborhood, that they use the free Marguerite shuttle? There's a whole host of things that I think more information, more communication is better for the public. There was, I took, there was something else that someone brought up. But I hope that you will leave your contact information and that you will take the time to come up and introduce yourself, because we are here to have a dialogue with you. And with only, I mean, I'm not even sure there were 10 speaker cards, and I can look out, and there's a lot more than 10 people in the audience. So, thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Faust. Any other? Councilmember Howard.
Thank you, Mayor Gee. Can people hear me in the back? I noticed when we speak right into the microphone, there's an echoing effect that's very distracting, so I'm going to try to stay far away from the microphone, and if you can still hear me, that will be wonderful. I wanted to thank every one of you for coming here this evening, and as Vice Mayor Faust said, there were only 10 speaker cards, but I know many of you have questions, and it's so intimidating to see cameras around and know that there are microphones going, and not everyone is that comfortable speaking in that format. So please feel free to come up to us at the end and speak to us or ask us questions. We may not have the answers, but at least we can get the information to you. We can write down what you have to say, and we can get that information to you. Several things were mentioned. Recycled water, for one, it's already been mentioned, but I'd like to mention it again, that we're looking at every opportunity to use recycled water wherever possible in Redwood City. And that will include having tankers or whatever, and opportunities for the members of the public to get recycled water, to water their trees and their landscaping. So we are looking to that for the future. I am so pleased that we made this multimillion-dollar investment years ago in recycled water, because we knew down the road this was going to be a problem, and so we're going to make best use of this resource, hopefully in many years to come. I was curious about the instant hot water. I have that in my home, and I paid quite a bit of money for it, but there must be less expensive options out there, and I was hoping Public Works might be able to look into something like that, because what was mentioned is so important. How much water you run in order to get to the hot water stage is quite a bit. And when I flip on the switch, and it's as easy as that, and then I turn on the faucet, I get my hot water. So maybe we could look into something, and if we do some bulk buying, who knows, maybe we can get rebates or incentives for people in the community to invest in something like this for their apartments or their homes, so. And I see Public Works, Mr. Ramona is shaking his head in agreement that he would look into it, so I know we're not supposed to give direction tonight, so I won't look. But I know it's important enough that we would look into it. What I have to say about our community and our staff is, I love living in Redwood City because I have never lived anywhere where people are so willing to find solutions to problems. We don't all agree, and that's okay. And we all have a little different way of going about what we want to do, but this community has always been willing to step up and address problems and see if we can find solutions. So I'm really glad you're here tonight, and if you do have a problem you haven't heard brought up, bring it to our attention. As far as housing goes, I wanted to let you know that there are some things we are doing. I belong to the Hart Board, which is a San Mateo County Regional Board. Redwood City is a member at the table. And we got a loan so that we can build some affordable housing, the first affordable housing complex in downtown Redwood City in the precise plan area, and that's Habitat for Humanity. And we received a $500,000 loan so that we could do land acquisition and pre, they call it, pre-development costs. And so I'm happy to report that we are going to be working for Habitat for Humanity, who's been a wonderful partner in Redwood City over the years in building affordable units. And I'm hoping we'll have more opportunities to do that. We're working on our accessory dwelling unit ordinance, and there are a number of other things we're doing in the housing element in order to provide more affordability in our Redwood City area. Diversity is our biggest strength in Redwood City, and we need to work at that so that we can provide housing for a multitude of incomes and diversities in Redwood City. It's not going to be easy, and we can't do it for everyone, but I think Redwood City's at the forefront in trying to do a good job in providing more housing opportunities for our people in Redwood City. So keep bringing up your ideas, keep looking at our website. I think it's important you stay in tune with the website, because there's so much information on there that could answer a lot of the questions that are here tonight. And again, we'll all be here at the end to answer any questions you might have, and thank you so much for coming.
Thank you, Councilmember Howard. Just for council, we have three more speakers here that have showed up. I've got Allison Madden, followed by Francesca Fambault, and then James Jonas. For those of you that came in late, Sylvia has sort of our version of the colored lights
Hi, thank you. I told them to put Francesca first, but I guess they didn't. I just wanted to speak in public comments to advocate to the city council that you take a lot of care and consideration and determination with regard to Dock Town. As you know, it's been a marina here in Redwood City for five decades, and right now there is a process, there is a really great San Francisco law firm, Morrison and Forster, that is meeting with the commission and its staff to point out to them regulations that they weren't aware of, that really do support a mixed-use commercial, recreational, and residential marina on state lands, and Redwood Creek, as you know, is state lands, the management of which has been granted to the city. And so there's a lot of low-income people down there, there's very low, too low and moderate income households down there. Everyone is very happy with the city's management of Dock Town. The Public Works Department has been very responsive, and that we know of, you know, everyone's adhering to the marina rules and really enjoying the city's management. If the city would rather not manage it, there are many, many professional organizations that would, and we have had wonderful harbor masters there in the past. So I really advocate to you to let the process play out with Morrison and Forster and the State Lands Commission, and allow them to really consider giving their professional commission opinion and not just the opinion of staff, so that we can keep Dock Town. Dock Town serves the public trust, we run a yacht club, we support local sailing, we clean the creek, and many other things. So our use down there is consistent with the public trust, and I ask that you really keep an open mind and not rush any decisions. I know it's on the agenda for next Monday, and you know, we feel like the commission has actually turned over, it's the three highest constitutional offices in the state, it's other than the governor, it's the lieutenant governor, the finance director, and the controller, and they've all turned over with elections, and they really need to be brought up to speed, they need to meet with Morrison and Forster, and in the past, it's only been staff that has given their opinion on this, and so there's no rush. We've been there 50 years, and you know, we'd really appreciate the opportunity to make our case to you. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Madden. Francesca Fambro, followed by James Jonas.
Hi, my name is Francesca Fambro, and I moved to Redwood City a little over three years ago, after living in San Francisco for about eight years. When I met my fiance, we decided to move in together. He was in San Jose, but we both work out of San Carlos, and he's had, actually lived on boats before in the past, and so we had a live aboard opportunity, which is in today's world, at least around the Bay Area, for the time being, a rare opportunity that we decided to jump upon, and I've really never turned back, because it's the, you know, it is a way of life, but I think as an American, everybody should be able to experience and choose what they feel is right for themselves. And for me, it's about as close to Nirvana or Utopia that you can get, because the people there are, it's the closest knit community I've ever lived in, and I've lived in Arizona, Kansas, and California now, and it offers the affordable housing. People are very self-sufficient, help each other out all the time. Water-wise, we have no front yards or backyards, and so we don't really use a lot of water. I have a 70-gallon tank, so I monitor that quite closely and, you know, time my showers, you know, to usually 10 minutes or less, you know, so we're pretty efficient in that respect. As Allison said, we have a yacht club that's been in a historic tank that is probably one of the first structures ever built in Redwood City that we believe dates to probably somewhere in the mid-1800s, that we actually want to try to promote, to keep that a part of Redwood City, because that's our maritime heritage, and that yacht club's been there for 50 years, well, since the 80s, but the yacht club itself has been around for 50 years, and Dock Town itself is historic, in my eyes anyhow, being 50-plus years old. So like Sausalito, I think we have a real, it may be a bit of a diamond in the rough, but I think it's high time we put it at the forefront and really, you know, cherish it, promote it, and also move forward to create other kind of living opportunities, such as Ferrari Pond, where you could have other floating communities. They're becoming quite popular globally now, so I think it's something to definitely, to, you know, know that this is a great opportunity for Redwood City, and we should preserve, protect, and promote. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Fambro. James Jonas.
Wow. Thanks, guys. This is actually really wonderful. I love this town hall thing. We should be doing this more often. First of all, we were a little bit surprised with regard to Dock Town coming up on the agenda. We were surprised because it seemed there was a rush to judgment, as was articulated by Allison. Morrison Forster, which is representing our Redwood Creek Association, in this case, is now talking to State Lands. Now, just to, a bit of edification, the state of California has taken a very strange position with regard to sea level rise. Essentially, what they've said is as the seas rise, they get to take, which means no homes, businesses are only marina-type of businesses, or very, very specific uses. And as a consequence, all of Redwood City is threatened by this, and this is a real challenge. They're under threat. Now, the thing is, is that people say, "Well, that's good, that's way in the future," but remember that when you buy a home, its value is determined by not only what you use it for today, but all the total value that's created in the future. That means that when a buyer comes in, they're going to be starting to calculate, is sea level rise going to affect one marina that is right next to us? Can I trust that that's going to stay there? So this is a common threat that the state of California has kind of articulated to Redwood City, and I think that we have a wonderful opportunity here, Redwood City does, of working with one of the top law firms. This is actually somebody who understands public trust doctrine. We've been searching for people like this. This is very hard to find. They have brought in a new litigator on that team, they're expanding their team, and they're very serious with regard to this. What we want you to do, what I think the opportunity is here, is to join us, stand by our side, because Redwood City's interest is, in this case, aligned with Dock Town's interest in this matter. We should work together, so I would love the result of tomorrow's meeting says, "We're going to have a staff person, we're going to work with our team up there, and we're going to find a solution for everybody." And guess what? Just as Diane said, this is all about finding solutions. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Jonas. That does conclude the speaker cards that I have. Is there any other comments from council that anyone would like to make? Councilmember Giddy?
Thank you, Mayor Gee. I'd like to thank the community. What is exciting about being here is that there are many faces that I've never seen before at city council meetings, so if this is the case, that means that it's been a good opportunity for us. Maybe you can't make it to our city council meetings downtown, so we are here to be with you, so that's exciting. I want to make sure that you know that we have great staff here, so after we finish, that you are able to connect with our library, our public works, our police, our fire departments that are here, to make sure that we are able to connect. We try in so many ways. There was one of our members that mentioned, we have MyRedWoodCity app, we have the Nextdoor, we have the smart meters, but we can never fully connect with everyone in our community. It's impossible, so this is one venue that we're always challenged. How do we get to folks, to give them the right information? And I hope that what you were going to hear tonight, both from all of us, what you've heard from our assistant city manager and also from the mayor, are some of the facts and some of the misinformation that's out there that we're able to clarify, because one of the things I heard is a concern for water. Well, we wouldn't be building anything if we hadn't allotted the water in the Precise Plan. A lot of the things that we've heard as well about the buildings, well, there were a lot of community meetings that were involved regarding the heights, regarding the look of the buildings, so there's a lot of misinformation that I hope that meetings like this, the applications that are at Nextdoor, will clarify them for you. And one of the biggest issues, and I was just talking to someone as we came in, is housing, and it's not unique to Redwood City. It is a challenge, and no one is dispensable in our community. We all value each one of you, we all have a part to play in this community, and the mayor also will give us some information on what we are doing, what we're able to do, because as we hear about apartment owners that are raising the rents, we also know that there are apartment owners that are working hard to keep our community members here, and that there are other opportunities. So a lot of the things that we hear tonight, we really want to make sure that we have all of the information, that we're able to give you some of the answers that we have, or to connect you to some of the sources, because it's, sometimes it's the misinformation that I think makes us upset, and this is what we're here to do. That's why we're reaching out, that's why we have MyRedWoodCity app, that's why we have all these opportunities for you to come in, also to come and speak to us after. So I want to thank you for taking time from your busy schedule on a Monday night and come and speak to us, and let us know what's in your mind, what's on your mind.
Thank you, Councilmember Giddy. Councilmember Seaver?
Is this on? I turned it off earlier, so I want to make sure you got it back on. Thank you all for coming out tonight. I say this from time to time from the dais or from podiums like this. We sign up to take Monday nights off, to miss parts of the Warriors game, to miss whatever show we probably shouldn't be watching, but thank you, because you don't all sign up for this, and I appreciate it. This is a great number of people. I think by far, out of our third, I think this is by far the biggest crowd, so I appreciate that. I wanted to address two issues, a lot of what is, a lot of things that I'm going to say, or would have said have been said, but I want to address two things. One is water. Not only do I serve on the Utilities Committee, but I also serve on the board, as the chairman of the Board of Silicon Valley Clean Water, which used to be called SBSA, which is otherwise known not only as your sewer plant, but your recycled water plant, or our recycled water plant. And I want you to know that that board out there and the staff out there is very, very actively and aggressively looking at other options to expand the use of recycled water, not because it really changes the allotment for Redwood City, it does that, our water master plan does that, and you can get more information on that from Ramona and his staff, but we are looking at opportunities to expand it to other user areas outside of Redwood City, such that it can solve what is not just a localized problem, but a regional and statewide problem. So I can assure you that not only is the city aggressive with recycled water, but regionally we are having aggressive conversations with how we can do that. The second thing is on the issue of housing. It has been mentioned in various detail, and you will be hearing more come back, but I really look at this in very simplistic terms as two issues. One of it is support, and I know this council is working hard, and our staff is working hard behind the scenes to look at opportunities to provide support, to stabilize rents in the area through incentive programs, using the carrot rather than the stick. I do know that we have a number, I experienced personally, a number of very good landlords in Redwood City, and I realize that we have some bad apples, and I believe that we can work to bring them into alignment with what is, with ethical practice. But I also want to address the issue of supply. This is a supply and demand economy. We can't change that. The issue is, is that housing through the years has been woefully underbuilt in the Bay Area. There's a report in the edition of the San Francisco Business Times, I don't know how available it is online, but I would encourage you to get it, but in what's called the, in the Bay Area, there are 101 cities under what's called ABAG, or the Association of Bay Area Governments, and every year, ABAG issues numbers in terms of the amount of housing that cities should be building. And there was a graph in this latest issue, I saw it this weekend, I got it in the mail today, and actually reread it just before I came to this town hall meeting. Redwood City out of 101 cities ranks number three in the Bay Area with how much housing we are currently building. We are currently running, I think it was either 85 or 87% of our ABAG numbers. I love my colleagues in all the other 20-some cities on the peninsula, but the next highest-ranked city in San Mateo County was so far down the list, I had to keep looking and looking and looking and looking to find it, and they were in the low 40 percentiles. So housing, the affordability of it through supply, is a regional issue. I applaud my colleagues, I applaud people before me that have sat up here. We are doing what we can, we know we need to do more, and we're committed to that. I am committed to finding new ways to solve this issue. We are working hard on the supply issue, and we need partners in other communities on this peninsula where large companies have located to build housing for employees. So if you know people in other cities, it is not an issue. Water is not something that one city will solve, and housing is not something that one city will solve, so we're working hard at it, and we'll continue to stay at it, I can assure you of that.
Thank you, Councilmember Seaver. Any other council colleague would like to make a comment?
Let me just wrap up and say thank you. Thank you for spending some time with us this evening. Thank you for taking the courage to speak before the council, and again, as many council members have shared, come talk to us after, so it's not so intimidating with the microphone in front of you and being on TV. You all matter. We've heard a lot of different opinions and thoughts tonight, from those that are struggling to stay in a home, who want rent control, to those who want a complete construction and building moratorium, to issues about water, traffic, building heights, a number of different issues, and I can guarantee when we go to other neighborhoods, we get a similar list, but they're different. And so our job is to find a way to balance all of the above within the laws that we are given, and some of them aren't dealt by us, they're dealt by the state, they're dealt to us by the county, and in some cases, dealt to us by the federal government. Housing is a big, big issue. There's no question about it, and this council is doing some, many, not just some, many different things to incentivize housing production, to incentivize property owners to keep people in their homes, to help leverage funds, and we're very, very pleased and very happy Habitat for Humanity is back again with their fourth project, with ownership housing in our downtown. And then, you know, we have the most Habitat for Humanity units in the entire peninsula, because they've been a great partner here, and we've invested together. But nevertheless, we can't solve it by ourselves. And as Councilmember Seaver said, we work up and down the region, there's a great company down the street that most of you have on your smartphone, they're on their way to 8,000 employees, but that city hasn't produced any housing. So where do they come to? They come to places that have housing. And so I have been very upfront with my elected colleagues around the region, they have to do their fair share. Redwood City can't do it by ourselves. But other than that, we're creating an affordable housing fund, so that we can have community partners help fund affordable housing. We have what we call, I call it Partnership Redwood City, and one of the misnomers about Partnership Redwood City is that it's targeted to builders and developers. It is not. This council approved a framework for Partnership Redwood City last month. It includes builders, developers, but in many ways, more importantly, employers and their employees. It is no, it's not good enough just to come to Redwood City, go to your office, work, and then go home. We want employers and their employees engaged in our community, working with our nonprofits, working with creating housing, spending money in our restaurants and stores, and being connected to Redwood City. That's what partnership is all about, and so we have a framework that we've approved, and we'll be bringing back bits and pieces and parts, because there's so many, over the next six months, to get Partnership Redwood City going in a robust way, some things nobody else in this county is doing. We're also partners with the county on the 21 Elements Study, so that if we want, we can then develop a commercial linkage fee, so that, again, that can support affordable housing and housing creation in our community. And I can go on and on, and there's so many more things that we're doing that no other city's doing, not only in the county, but in the state, to create incentives and innovate, because when the governor took away redevelopment, he didn't give us any more tools. So if you think about 2,500 units of housing in our downtown, in which most of it at one point was redevelopment, and 20% had to be affordable, when they took away redevelopment, 500 units of affordable housing just went with it, in a heartbeat, and we're working really hard to find ways to backfill and create new tools for that. Some people talked about traffic. Many of us work regionally and around, not only countywide, but the region, on transportation. Councilmember Giddy serves on the Metropolitan Transportation Commission. Vice Mayor Faust just concluded, what, three terms on the transportation? 10 years on the Transportation Authority. I serve on Cal Councilmember Gede serves on the Metropolitan Transportation Commission. Vice Mayor Faust just concluded, what, three terms on the transportation? 10 years on the Transportation Authority. I serve on Caltrain and SAM Trans. So we are very well-connected in terms of transportation. Caltrain has 16 new cars, new to the system. They'll start pulling six-car trains within the next three months, increasing bike capacity on Caltrain. Caltrain modernization is coming, the electrification. We are replacing, and I always make fun of our Woodside 101 interchange, that it has earned the right to be replaced. And we are underway with the design and environmental studies for that. We have to kind of update our terminology because I serve as chair of Commute.org and we were talking about van pools the other day. Van pools are dated. People are talking about Uber Pool and Lyft Line. I go, "What the hell's that?" Where you have these rideshare organizations that go to your home and pick you up and then pack their car with four or five riders and then take you to your job. It's a new era of getting to work. Because I was talking to somebody the other day about recruiting workers and he said, "When they recruit workers from San Francisco, the workers say, 'You have to pay me more because I need a car to get around.'" In San Francisco, you don't need a car. So we're trying to reinvent the modern way of working and living in a very different place that's not used to it. And change has been hard, but we're working hard to bring everyone along together in all of our neighborhoods. So I encourage you to stay connected, whether it's through MyRedwoodCity or Nextdoor. Do your homework. I really want to encourage you to do your homework because it's really easy to post stuff up there that has no merit or that, that people want to omit certain bits of information. So do your homework, stay connected, be involved, and let's just keep Redwood City a great place by working together. So thank you for your time this evening. Hopefully the Warriors game is still on. Is it still on, John? Yeah, I don't know, maybe you can catch the end of the Warriors game. Talk to us after the meeting. Thank you very much. We have our next council meeting on, next Monday, the 27th. And the vice mayor and I will be out doing our State of the City at the Veterans Memorial Senior Center on May 14th and at the Fair Oaks Community Center on May 26th. The May 14th, that's 11 o'clock in the, during the day, May 26th, 7 o'clock in the evening. And as I wrap up, I want to thank our city clerk and her team for making all the arrangements for us to be out here at Kennedy School. Thank you all for joining us and we'll see you in another meeting soon.
Mayor G.
Oh, Councilmember Howard.
Could we make any announcements?
Sure.
Oh, thank you. I just wanted to let you know, one of the sheets that's on the table, I hope you'll pick it up. It's this coming Saturday, it's our annual spring cleanup day. If you haven't come, I hope you'll join us. You come to Public Works, we feed you breakfast, we pick sites and clean them up in Redwood City, you come back for lunch, you get to work beside wonderful people and our sponsors are many in our own community and I hope you'll join us. That's April 25th, celebrating Earth Day. And one of the sites is going to be cleaning up along the back of the, along the corridor of the farmer's market. I wanted to let you know the farmer's market first day was this past Saturday and I hope you'll join them there on Arguello that goes to Brewster, there's plenty of parking. Last but not least, some of you said, "Where can I find information about services?" I left a bunch of cards at the table, "City at Your Service" in English and in Spanish. It gives you all the numbers you need to know on how to find the resources in Redwood City. Thank you, Mayor G.
Thank you, Councilmember Howard. Thank you everyone for being here, meeting adjourned.